To the board, to my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bezakowski, Tony Nacastro, and Don Gurney. The way their hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. With that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first case.
I'd just like someone to let me know on Zoom that we're live.
Muti Zoom.
Are we live?
Are we all set, Brian?
What's up?
I just wanted to make sure we're all set.
Yeah, I was muting myself because my dogs keep fighting in the background. You don't want to hear them.
This is an application from a person aggrieved. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant are the trustees of the village at Flat Hill, via counsel Jill M. Schaefer, Esquire, 50 Cortland Circle in Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. The undersigned hereby appealed is follows. This is an appeal of the building commissioner's July 24, 2024 decision regarding a shed to the rear of 10 Alder Way, Exclusive Use 21, allegedly in violation of the Lunenburgs Bylaw, Section 250, 5.5(c)(5) and 250, 5.5(c)(6). There is additional correspondence from the building inspector, but since this petition's been filed, I received an email on September 4, 2024. Lisa, since your board meets every two weeks, please continue for one month, if that is okay with you. I will attend the meeting and request a continuance till October 23, 2024. Thank you. And that's from Jill M. Schaefer of Moriarty, Bealan, and Malloy LLC.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And with that, since they're asking for a continuance till, I believe you said, the 23rd?
Of October, yes.
Of October. So, you can comment if it's brief.
Were you speaking to me? I apologize.
Hi, I'm George Burden, 39 Cortland Circle. We sent an email today to most of you board members. I think you all got it. I'm representing myself, my wife, and my family. My wife won't be here today because she's taking care of our children at home. This is a very abusive, we feel, application. The petition is all mean. We're going to H.O.A., okay? We're going to H.O.A. We're the trustee that's now got a shed on common land and wants to be protected. All the homeowners in this association that have deeded access to that land do not have have not been notified. Me, myself, have not been notified. My wife hasn't been notified. My neighbors on both sides of us have not been notified. Incorrect. Should everybody, even though the state's that it's 300, feed around the property that you have to notify individuals? It should not. It should be everybody that's deeded access to that property should have been notified. We also have some other issues we can get into at the hearing when it's here, but we feel this is a very abusive situation. We were charged $20,000 for being accused of putting things on common land, which was inaccurate, and we never put anything on common land. This guy has a shed. Our bylaws strictly state no permanent structures can be put on common land. So please take that into consideration when we'll be here.
Please, did the whole abutis list went out?
It's pretty disgusting, honestly.
But there's hearing.
The abutis went out per the list that was attached to the application.
In the 300 foot.
Everybody within 300 feet. That was prepared by the assessor's office.
Yeah, if you look at it, we're deeded owners of that property.
This is...
It's a little different, and I don't want some tricky... My name's been mentioned in this petition. We petitioned the board back in 2009 to have sheds. We wanted to put a shed in our property, and we were denied. There were nine sheds in this neighborhood. We then went around to the neighborhood to get sheds. We made it, and that statement that Mrs. Schaefer is pointing to about us states exclusive use area boundaries. That's our own individual property. This shed has nothing to do with that, so that shouldn't even be considered. It should be considered completely that this shed is on common land owned by 44 individuals, 44 homes.
Okay.
And if you can read my email at some point, I'd appreciate it, but I will be back here at the...
Yes, we will. We read all of that.
Appreciate it.
And so, you know, I'm sure you'll be coming back on that date, so you can further speak to it at that time.
Certainly, we'll try to do it.
We have to have the applicants, everybody here.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I would ask for a motion from the board to continue it.
I'll make a motion that we continue as requested to the 23rd of October.
October.
Second.
I second.
Oh, baby.
Aye.
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 And aye. So it is continue to the...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board.
Oh. Who's on?
Can you please identify yourself?
My apologies. Jill Schaefer, representing the trustees of the village of Flat Hill. And I was just thanking the board and Mr. Chair for the continuance.
Okay. She's here, darling.
Yes.
So we're all set, right?
Yes.
All set.
All right, we're all set. Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next case was scheduled for 7:10, so we're gonna have to wait just a couple minutes. Is it 7:09?
Mm-hmm.
Just give me a minute to look at this.
What did I do with my pen?
Want to use mine? See if this one... Can you use mine? I installed it from IC. Yeah, I think we're all set. We can read the next case.
Okay. This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. The name and address of the applicant is Web Motors Inc., Web Mo... I'm sorry, Web Motors Corp., 36 Summer Street, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows. To operate an auto repair and used auto sales at 36 Summer Street. They were asking for 17 cars for auto repair, 53 cars for auto sales, and six employee cars. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Section 250, 4.1. The street address is 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg, Mass. Assessor's map 115, parcel 8. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Peter M. Kelly, LLC, 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg, Mass. The deed is recorded in the Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7171, page 353, and recorded May 7 of 2010. The undersigned hereby has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in the case, described the case and the dates involved. In 2012, there was a special permit granted for auto sales and repairs. In December of 2019, a special permit was granted for Lunenburg Auto Sales. The application is signed August 26 of 2024 by Glossial Bueno and Tatiana Olivera de The special permit questions are as follows. The question, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The response, the majority of the work will be performed inside the existing garage bays and away from the public. There is ample room on the lot to allow for cars and delivery trucks to enter without affecting traffic on Summer Street. There is also ample room when exiting the lot to see in both directions to avoid traffic problems. The work being performed should not have any fire and/or explosion hazards stemming from it. B, the surrounding... I'm sorry, the question is, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? And the reply, the surrounding pieces of property are mostly commercial, therefore I do not see any adverse material effects on the local community. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply, all storage of materials and cars will be inside the building to limit any sightliness to the general public. Also, most of the repair work will be performed inside the service bays to further limit the impact of the public. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? Excuse me. Okay, sorry for the feedback. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the response is, the majority of the work will be done inside the service bays. There should be little if any noise, dust, vibration, smoke, odor, heat, or glare produced by the work performed at this location. Only minor diagnostic tests and road tests will be performed inside the view of the general public. There's also a sketch with the layout of the vehicles, a list of abutis, all of whom were notified two weeks prior to today, and there is an IRS document with Web Motors listed dated August 9, 2024. Disagreement release attached. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, I would invite the applicant to come to the mic.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gianni Miranda. I'm gonna be helping them with translation.
Okay.
His name is?
Glossial Olivera.
Glossial Olivera.
Tatiana Olivera.
Tatiana Olivera.
Okay. Okay, you're here for the property, the lot next to the one that we have already talked about previous.
Correct.
And with all the violations that were going on, we had discussed and we had kind of come to an agreement on a much smaller amount of cars for that one lot. And the condition was, and what we were talking about, was that we really, because of all the improprieties that happened, that we wanted to kind of give you the opportunity because, as you say, you were an investor.
Okay, one second. So, dependo a problema que eles tiveram com a companhia anterior, então eles fizeram a reunião e resolveram mudar o número de carro que vocês vão estar vendendo, né? Se diminuíram o número de carros. Okay.
But anyway, again, because of all of that, what we wanted to do, and the condition was, what we're thinking of is that, you know, we would let you have a much smaller amount of cars, and if we had no issues with that, if we had no complaints, no more of the monkey business with cars without titles, no customer complaints, no violations, because you actually lost your right on that special permit prior to that because of the violations. You have to comply with all local, state, federal, all of that, and it certainly was beyond that. So what we had intended was that you would start that, work with the 30 cars, go for an X amount of time with no violations, none of that, and then we said, well, maybe you can come back. So I personally think you're here very prematurely, in the sense that you're back here now asking for another 78 cars plus the 30, which is 108 cars. So I'm speaking for myself right now, the rest of the board, I don't know, but I just personally think that, you know, this, I know there's still an investigation, I know there's still going, so I do think you're here premature. Because you haven't done anything, so you haven't shown this board that you were gonna correct all of the mistakes of the past.
I'd like to speak, please.
My name is Tatiana.
My name is...
Tatiana Oliveira.
Tatiana Oliveira.
When you translate, speak up a little bit. I'm a little out of here.
And enter the mic.
Yeah, and enter the mic.
So this is a brand-new business.
Glossial.
Glossial. He's partnering in with us. We had no relation with the previous business. Or with the people that were in the prior business.
Let me interject one thing. You say you had no relation, but you told us at the last hearing you were an investor. And an investor does have a relationship. It means that you are putting your money in and back, and it doesn't mean you were there daily, but that makes you part of the... Right, and I know you're trying to recoup some of your money.
Yes, I have invested my money in a previous business. But because I'm alone, I decided to seek help. Because I'm gonna need more money. So he's gonna invest in the company with me. He's gonna be helping with the money to invest in cars, and I will be with him in this business, assisting him, working together. Because Glossial is also very experienced. And he's gonna be using his own resources to buy the cars for the company.
Okay. I'll open it up to the board for right now.
What are you planning on doing with the previous approval and lot next door that we granted about two months ago?
We're gonna be working together on both buildings, on number 40. He's gonna be more in charge of it, and I will be more in charge of the number 36.
He'll be more in charge of what?
So he's gonna be like the general manager. He's gonna be...
Yes, this isn't the time for public discussion.
Can you read my message?
Let me see.
Who is this? Do they go waiting for somebody? Go ahead. All right. Basically, I'm gonna ask you, why can't you start small with what we gave you?
Nope, I still can't hear you.
And I mean, you know, let's crawl before we run, kind of thing. You know, you're going from 30 to 108. That's significant. When we had the discussion here about the number of cars and cutting it back just to give you an opportunity to at least recoup some of your money, we didn't expect you to be back here with this whole new...
We are attempting to get a new license. 36 is gonna be more for repairs.
Say that again, aye?
Number 36, the business on number 36 is gonna be more involving with repairs of cars. And also, we're gonna attempt to sell some cars there, too.
You're gonna do what?
We are gonna be repairing and selling as well. Two months ago, I came for a different license. It was 40 Summer Street.
I understand, separate lots, I'm well aware of that.
So that's why we are here today, to attempt a new license, to work more in favor of the repairing the cars as well.
But, yeah, but the spot for repairs of like 17, you know, and the number of used cars for sale is like 70 or something, so...
Glossial would like to speak, please, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, it's 36. The other lot is 40.
He would like to talk as well, if that's okay. My name is Glossial. I'm 37 years old and I'm single. I've been living here in the United States for six years. I have a bachelor's degree, and I used to work in Brazil with sales. I have been a manager in sales. For three years. In car dealership in Somerville. In a dealership in Somerville. And I see this as a new opportunity to open my own business. So I'm here today in an attempt to get this new license so we can start working this business. In an attempt to help the community, to assist the community, and also in the business. I understand that the plan is, I have, we plan on repair 17 cars. The intention is to do the same thing that they were planning on doing before. We'd like to do everything the right way this time as the law requires. And our objective is to buy, fix it as needed, and then resell it. With his help, I'm gonna come in just more like working with him, more like him as a helper, and he's gonna be more in charge of things, like a general manager.
Okay, I can understand what you want to do and all of that, but again, I have to go back to, why can't you start with the 30? Because, and at least show us, I mean, you're not gonna run out and buy 108 cars, correct?
Yes.
You're gonna go out and buy 108 cars to sale?
No, we can start small.
Well, I'm, I don't know what the rest of the board, so I'm gonna open it back up to them, and then I'll...
Chairman, in my opinion, this lot is too congested for 70 cars, right?
Yes.
There's no access for emergency vehicles if something happens. It's not built for 53 cars, with 17 in the back. So it's just my thoughts and my thoughts on this case right now, so...
So what can we do? What's the possibility?
I'll be honest with you. My feeling is, I don't think you're ready to be here until you prove yourself with the other lot.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
I said, I honestly think you're here premature, and you shouldn't be here at this point until you prove yourself on the lot that we've already given you. That's my opinion, doesn't reflect the board. They can think something different.
I'm also concerned that this says 36, Summer Street, which is the lot that she was approved for, and you're asking for these other pieces, which is on 40, Summer Street, two completely different lots.
Yeah, they have 40. 40 is the one that's great. 40 is the little one. Okay, 36 is before us now, which is the big lot, and has the garage, two bay garage.
And 40 is the one next door?
Yeah, it's the small one to the left, if you're looking for a street.
Right, okay. Then I was confused as to which way they went. I also agree that I think there's too many without access for the police and fire, which usually people that request a permit for such a proposed facility ask for assistance from the police and fire to make sure that they have the proper way around for the vehicles in case they're needed. in an emergency, in the building for repairs and/or for personnel working on the vehicles. So I think there's too many there, and as far as... I can see, if you wanna rescind your choice for the neighboring lot, and choose to go with this lot only so that you have access to repair as well as sales, that would be a better choice.
He'd like to speak. They are a little bit confused.
The less...
Can you repeat about the transfer that you said, if you wanted to stay on this lot that is bigger versus the other one that was smaller?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I...
What he's... Yeah, what he's suggesting is that the special permit that we gave you...
O que o permit que a gente deu?
We were... He's suggesting that we can amend that, to move that to the big lot, but it stays the same. That's how you start.
Yeah, so, ele tá falando que você pode trocar, você pode pegar o permit que você já tem e passar pra esse lote maior.
And you'd have to put that in writing and give that to us, and then, then you could go to the big lot.
Você ficaria com o lote maior.
But, still, under the conditions of the original one we... And then, once you get established, you'd start doing whatever, down the road, and we're satisfied that everything is in compliance, and we could, you could come back.
Sim, eu, eu compreendo.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Inclusive, no lote do quarenta...
Actually, in lot forty.
Tentamos fazer a aplicação da...
We have attempted to apply.
Incluindo o Glacial e trocando o nome, porque o nome antigo teve muitos problemas e não conseguimos, então...
So in lot forty, we attempted to change the name for the business.
That, that you can do without us, correct, please?
No, but it was not approved, it was not approved. We attempted to, on the, on the one that we have been approved, we attempted to change the name of the business and bring him over, but we could not do that, they did not let us.
Well, they can change their name, right? Is that right?
So they had to open a brand-new company, a different company, in order to apply for the license.
Yes, porque eu chamei o Glacial.
Because now, he, Glacial came in as a partner.
Pra incluir na empresa e ele vai trabalhar, ele vai ser o único dono da, do quarenta agora, e eu somente vou ajudar ele na administração do trinta e seis.
Because he's gonna be the main owner of number forty, and I will be only helping him on thirty-six, that I'm already in as a secretary.
Inclusive, a gente já tá com a documentação, que ele abriu uma nova empresa, ele sendo único, exclusivo no nome...
We already have opened a brand-new corporation under his name.
Do quarenta.
For number forty.
Para que eu somente possa ajudar ele na administração.
So that I may come in with him, just to help him out with the administration part.
Porque...
But he's the owner.
Porque ele tem...
So, wait a minute, so you're, what, selling him?
O número quarenta.
Lot forty, is that what you're saying?
Não, estou repassando pra ele, somente, sim.
Yes.
E aí ele vai fazer uma nova aplicação...
So, yeah, before you even do anything, you're selling that to him?
Yes.
Number, number, número quarenta, né?
Sim, no número quarenta, eu vou sair, e aí a gente vai novamente...
Number forty, it's gonna be...
And what's his relationship with lot thirty-six?
E qual que é o relacionamento que você tem com o número trinta e seis? Que que isso tem a ver com o lote trinta e seis?
O trinta e seis, eu só vou tá ajudando ele na parte administrativa. Ele vai ser o, o dono, e eu vou tá somente fazendo a ajuda dele na parte administrativa.
So he's gonna come as my partner in number thirty-six as well, and I will be helping him with the administration part.
Okay, so he'll be the sole owner of forty, and a partner in thirty-six.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
E agora a gente vai fazer uma nova aplicação do building permit, porque não consegui fazer essa alteração.
Because they did not let me alter, alterate the name, change the name, the business that I had before. So we had to reopen a brand-new business under his name only, for number forty.
Então a, a, que foi aprovada dois meses atrás, não vamos estar utilizando.
So the one that was approved two months ago, unfortunately, we cannot use it.
Ou apenas por causa do nome que tava como...
Because the name Maxwell that we had before could not be altered.
Agora o número quarenta também vai chamar Web Models Inc.
So now, number forty is gonna be called Web Model Inc.
Okay. So he's gonna be forty.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna have a partnership for thirty-six, and what you are here, well, actually, you've gotta transfer the business and all that, I mean, you gotta go through the same steps.
Então você vai ter que, você vai ter que passar por tudo de novo, mesmos, os mesmos steps.
Yes, I understand.
Eu, eu tenho, eles me falaram quando fui fazer essa aplicação...
When I came to, for the application.
Que eu não poderia alterar, e que eu teria que passar tudo novamente, então a gente vai estar...
That I could not alterate the name, that I had to restart everything over.
E aí o Glacial já abriu uma nova empresa...
So that's why he already opened a brand-new business under his, name, under his name.
E ele que vai tá fazendo toda, vindo fazer a reunião...
And from now on, he will be the one coming for the meetings with you.
It's difficult, because you came before us, that you were gonna run it, that you were gonna do the cars, that you were going, that you had the experience, I asked you, you said, oh, I have all the experience to be able to do this by myself, be able to... And now you're telling me that you're not really doing it, he's doing it.
Que você não tá fazendo mais, que ele que vai estar fazendo.
Which is fine, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's... It still seems like there's a lot of things going on, huh?
Eu vejo como tá muito confuso, muita coisa acontece.
É justamente porque quando a gente conseguiu a licença...
This happened because when we first, when we first got the license...
Eu não consegui fazer a alteração do nome da empresa, e o nome da Maxi Auto era um nome que teve muitos problemas...
So the previous name, Max Auto, had too many, too much history, and I could not change the name.
E como o Glacial, uma pessoa que, ele tem experiência, ele teve, ele, ele teve outro dealer, ele...
And because Glacial has a lot of experience, he has had a dealership before.
Então eu decidi, pedi pra que ele pudesse assumir o quarenta, e eu ajudar...
So I decided to ask him for help, and, and offered him to take, to take ownership on number forty and come and help me out on thirty-six.
Then I, I personally would suggest, and I mean, it's up to you, you can do what you want, but I do have to tell you that there's only four members here, we usually have five. You have to get your permit, you need four out of four. I will tell you that. If you're gonna do this and transfer that one to him, that you do that, I'm almost gonna suggest that you withdraw tonight, and that you do that, get that out of the way, get that part of the puzzle solved. Because I really think you're here premature, I really do.
Você acha que vocês vai fazer, passar o business pra ele, o número quarenta, mas eu acho que ele, acho que você tá fazendo isso muito prematuramente.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just looking at this drawing that you submitted, there's not enough egress for the seventeen cars in the back, the employee cars. So you're gonna have to come up with, in my opinion, not simple, a new plan. Maybe knock it down to thirty-five, but what you're asking for is too much for that lot.
I, I agree, thinking that. You know, if we discuss this, I think we're gonna knock it... But, I'm not, at this point, even entertaining.
Mr. Chairman, how many cars were approved for lot forty? Was that thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. And so my understanding is absolutely nothing has happened at lot forty today, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, because, because you have the corporate name that has a bad history attached to it, and you haven't been able to do anything with that. So, I think what I'm hearing is that Glacial would be operating thirty-six and forty. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so, I think at the minimum, if, if we wanted to continue operating forty, they'd have to come back to put it under Glacial's name.
That's what I'm saying, right, do, do the first step.
And develop a track history, and the, this, I mean, the diagram of this, of number thirty-six is, uh, it's incredibly congested, I mean, it looks like you're putting as many cars, new and used, on that as you could possibly, not new, unused and repairs, you know, just, it doesn't seem feasible.
And then I can see other issues that would affect the neighborhood, right? Pest control for one thing, cars sit for a long time, we're gonna get pests. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot in here, that, just not...
Então eu pergunto. I have a question.
Como se podemos simplificar todo esse processo dos dois endereços? Se tem que abaixar o número de carro, pra poder que, que em breve a gente pode pegar a licença e poder trabalhar?
So how can we, what do you suggest that we do today, so we can get this going, because we need to work?
Porque a gente, nós estamos prontos para trabalhar, mas estamos esperando essa nova licença pra ter acesso de compra e venda.
Waiting for this licensing.
Para comprar e vender os carros.
So we can get going and start buying the cars.
Qual será a melhor, o melhor caminho para poder...
What is the best way, the best path for us here?
Para resumir esse, todo esse processo.
So we can fix the situation and get going with the licensing today.
And that's why we suggested that perhaps you go with the first pie you've already got.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
That you've already got is from us, you know, I... The licensing part doesn't go with us, always our zoning, strictly zoning. So, we've already given a special permit for the thirty cars on forty. And that what we're suggesting is you'd go with that, as your first step.
A gente já te deu, já a oportunidade de ir com trinta carros, então, continue com...
Right, just add his name, reapply, right? And go, take, get that out of the way, I suggest on this lot, thirty-six tonight. If it was up to me, I would, I would withdraw without prejudice and, and see if the board would allow it, and then come back at a later date, after you do that step.
Okay, so, you're suggesting that he, they drop off what we started before, and re-initiate for lot thirty-six? As well?
Forty.
For number forty.
The number forty.
Fazendo o que, é necessário fazer o quarenta?
Aplicar novamente com quarenta, com trinta carros.
Com trinta carro, com...
Não, já foi aplicado no trinta carro, qual que é a quantidade de carro que tá no quarenta? Qual é a quantidade, qual fala pra ele?
He been denied...
Não, come aí, come aí.
Permit recently, for lot thirty-six?
Ele tá falando que é muito carro no número trinta e seis, então, o número quarenta, qual que foi?
Não, ele tá falando do quarenta.
Não, aqui é o trinta e seis, qual que é o número quarenta, quantidade de carro que tá liberado?
Uh, for number, sorry, we have a question, for number... For number forty, just to make it clear, how many cars can we have in lot forty?
On lot forty, thirty.
Thirty, trinta carros.
Isso está pronto pra fazer a aplicação e começar, correto?
So if we, if we apply for the thirty cars, we would be okay with the thirty cars on lot forty?
Yes, if you transferred over and you get the license, you could do that.
Transfer of the...
Mr. Chairman, do they need to, if they want to do that, do they need to come back to the zoning board of appeals?
Hello?
No.
Can I have everyone?
Is that Brian?
No, you'll have to wait for public discussion.
Yeah, you'll have to wait. We will have public discussion, but we gotta finish the questions from the board first, so that you have... Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so the answer is Glacial could, could start operating at forty with no further zoning board of approval?
Well, they still have to...
We already opened the company, so we just need...
Reapply, whatever you have to do, because like I say, we...
So reapply for thirty, for, for thirty cars, and then he could come back here, and he'd have permission to start.
After you get it going, you get it, you know, and you've got a track record that, that is a lot different than the one that we have sitting in front of us.
Okay, ele quer uma, uma proposta melhor do que que você tá procurando hoje, que é o número de carros, né?
Não, eu posso começar com trinta carros no número quarenta, e depois vemos a operação no número trinta e seis. Mas a...
So he's willing to reapply and to drop the number of cars?
And so what you would do now is you would ask to withdraw.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, and that, and if the board allowed it, then you could come back at some point in the future. If we vote tonight... Just so you know, if we vote tonight, and we deny it, you can't come back for two years.
Se for den, se for negado, vocês não podem voltar por dois anos pra refazer isso.
Okay, é só pra tirar dúvida. Nós podemos já entrar com a licença no número quarenta, isso é a pergunta.
So we can, just to make sure, we can start, reapply for number forty with thirty cars?
Correct.
Okay.
So after, he already opened the, the business, so what's the next step that he needs to do?
You have to go through...
Right.
And ask for withdrawal...
Right.
And that's true?
You...
The petition for tonight.
Okay.
Without prejudice, so that you can come back in the future and request whatever you want, but also redesign and possibly get approval from the police and fire for access around, so that you don't have to go through another step beyond that.
You wouldn't, just one more point, go ahead.
Oi, ele tá pedindo pra você pedir pra eles fazer um withdrawal, o que é retirar o que foi apresentado, pra, sem, sem você ser prejudicado.
Como fazer sem pa carta?
É só você falar, você tem que anunciar em público e ver se eles aprudem, você quase iria de retirar, aí você vai ter que, aí você vai ter que...
Well, she actually...
Você vai reaplicar, fazer um plano, e no police station, no fire department, pedir pra eles fazerem um dry plan, dar um reporte, dar o que, trinta carros, vocês vão poder, eles vão poder, estar em segurança, aí depois você vai voltar aqui.
Esse é o quarenta, esse é o trinta, ele tá falando de quarenta. Não, Tatiana, tá errado. Tá falando de quarenta, você quer trinta, esquece.
We're talking about forty, number forty, correct?
Yeah.
What's that?
Talking about number forty?
The smaller one, number four.
Number four, okay.
Uh, one other point, actually, just one other point, actually, once you transfer it to him, you, you do have to come back to this board, just so that we have the documentation on the new ownership.
E sobre o número quarenta, tá resolvido, né?
So number forty has been resolved, okay? Now, let's talk about thirty-seven, okay?
It's good to go after you transfer and get a license.
So he's just asking again, so just to make sure we understand. So we need to ask for the withdrawal today of this that we presented today, correct?
You have to ask for a withdrawal, yeah.
And then if the petition is granted, then he now can go forward with the application that, for the, for the business that he already opened?
And he would have to come back, because they're, you're transferring it out of your name to his name.
Okay, Jim? Can I just make sure this is all clear?
Yeah, absolutely.
On point of order, Mr. Chairman. Forty was already granted to Tatiana...
Yes, exactly.
For Maxi Auto. You do not want to own Maxi Auto any longer, is that the way I'm understanding it?
Correct.
So you're gonna move it to Glacial?
Yes.
And Glacial is gonna open up his own business?
And Glossiel is gonna open up his own business? And that means he'll have to come back to this board
Right.
for approval?
Yeah, he will have to come back.
And as far as tonight, if, if you withdraw your petition, that means it goes away? If they allow you, if you ask to withdraw tonight's petition? I just want to make sure everybody.
Yeah.
They may have to pay fees again.
Yeah, now it's all online.
Yeah. They should know that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's on them, yeah.
That's on them.
I'd like to withdraw the application that has been approved two months ago.
Okay, and with that.
Wait, wait a minute.
Without prejudice?
You're withdrawing this petition tonight?
The one tonight, correct?
What about, she has to withdraw on the other?
The other one you're not withdrawing, we gotta reapply.
She's just reapplying.
Okay.
Once she reapplies, you're giving up that anyway.
Okay, so what we're doing is, you requested to withdraw tonight's petition for 36.
Yes.
So, and then you will have to, once you transfer, you will have to come back. And then at, at some point down the road, whatever, after that. So with that, I will ask for. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, public discussion, please. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Is there only one on there, Lisa?
There's two people on Zoom, and I don't see anybody using.
Would you raise, raise your hand if you would like to speak, please, from, on the public on Zoom?
Hello, good night.
Hello, we need your name and address.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Name and address, please?
Luis Santos, 106 Carter Street, Lamster Mass.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Hi, I would like to say that my nephew, he was a victim of Tatiani and Sidney. And from last meeting, she said she was trying to resolve all the issues from the past, and he contacted her, but she didn't do anything. She didn't resolve anything. Did you want to add anything else? Uh, no, that's all.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, I would ask for a motion to.
I, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to allow Tatiana Alveira de Silva to withdraw her motion without prejudice for 36 Summer Street, Lamster Mass.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. So this is withdrawn, and you can do the transaction, then we'll.
We have a question about 36.
What's that?
They have a question about. I think, I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I. Meeting is adjourned. We're all set.